We'll call the meeting to order. Can everyone stand for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Do we have anyone for public discussion?
So just a quick question. We have new AMOS scheduled to arrive either later this month or first next month, hopefully later this month. We won't have any AMOS to sell this time. So far, the changes we made, we haven't. The AMOS for good sales is a 2,000 E450 van north of a quarter mile. So I was 24 years old, was getting tired. It's not a lot of value. I was looking at putting on gum deals. See what we get for bids. Also advertise it locally, then go on gum deals and bid for it. If anybody's interested, make a good farm.
Service truck.
Just kind of what's left for life. Anyway, I didn't know if I need board approval or if that's just something we could do because of meat guidelines for disposal of property, gum bids.
Meat guidelines for disposal of property.
Yeah, this low dollar figure really bad.
It's gonna be worth a whole.
Should be fine, but I think it's just good for the board to be aware of it. Phil had asked me about it.
The crew got all cleaned up and all spotless. I thought this was a good time to take pictures and get some. Looks better than heads of yours.
Okay, that's all I have. Thank you.
Thanks, Phil. All right. Is there anything else for public discussion? Great. If not, I would entertain a motion to approve the agenda in minutes.
So.
Okay. We have a motion and a second. Any discussion or questions? All those in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed, say nay. Motion carried unanimously. Monthly update from Secondary Road Foreman. Good morning.
Good morning.
Good morning.
What do you guys know today?
Well, gender, grass, soles, gravel. He has blade done, gravel's set up for what's coming next.
The fun time of the year?
It's that time of year, we'll put it that way.
Yeah. Yeah. Have you guys started mowing gravels yet? Or just still, okay.
Use the whole process.
Yep.
We have a couple of them down.
Is that that axle problem or something different?
No. You can't pull it. It's going slow. Filter's overheating. Got to go really slow. Grass is tall right now. And then also, we just, just some maintenance service calls that are needed.
Okay. Any questions from the board? I guess. Okay. There's nothing else. Thank you, guys. Yeah. Do it. We can do years of service for quick before KRC.
Okay, yeah, that's right.
Okay. Well, let's, let's do years of service since Brian's here and everyone's ready. We got a couple here today. Start with Brian. Come on up. And we got a years of service award for 15 years.
Thank you.
Congratulations. Thank you.
Are you gonna smile, Brian? You don't want to hold that.
There you go.
Hold it up a little bit. There we go. Got it. All right.
Hi, Brian.
Would you hold it in front of his face? Thank you.
Yep, thanks for having me.
Thanks, Brian.
Yeah. We got someone else who's been here a few years too. 25 years for Tammy. Thank you. Congratulations. Years of service. There we go. Perfect.
No speech?
No.
Maybe next time.
Was that the 30-year mark?
Yeah. 30 years is approaching, isn't it?
All right. We can go to KHC's monthly report. Good morning.
Good morning. Um, I just all share a couple of things and then Steph has a couple as well. We had, had a good July despite some provider vacations. Usually July is a lower month for that, just, just, um, just due to that. Um, our ER stays fair, stays pretty consistent. Really over the last four, four, four years, it's stayed about the same, which is good to see that there hasn't been that uptick. I, I did look at this and I've been sharing it with our board and our med staff as well. I was looking at our breakout of our clinic visits in a month. And, uh, you know, really despite how high our vol, our volumes have been, one-third of our point, our, of our appointments are same day. So our providers really do a good job of it. If people need to get in for something that day, they will make a way to work them in. So, you know, just trying to keep some of that stuff out of the ER is our goal. And then, and then just the last thing was, and Stephanie, you were definitely a part of this more as we wrapped up our intern program, our first ever one for the summer. We had, um, it was two in our occupational therapy and speech therapy department. One in purchasing and one on our inpatient floor, working as a CNA. So these were all high school students. And we really felt that that was a great way to get people interested in healthcare. And we'll definitely do that from here, from here on, on out. So.
Well, so we kind of have a lot going on at the hospital as far as celebrations. So first off, this weekend, we are celebrating our 75th anniversary. As you know, the hospital started out as St. Anne's and then over the years has progressively become Kasoot Regional Health Center. And, um, so we are having a celebration this weekend out at Veterans Park on Sunday from four to seven, and it is open to the public. So that's kind of a fun thing. We also have Dr. Alison Rush, who started last week. Her first day with us was on Tuesday and she actually started seeing patients on Friday of last week. So we're excited to have her. She's local from Algona. She was at Tilchester. So excited that she has joined our staff and is back. And then lastly, we continue to be recognized as a top hospital. We've been notified that we are in the top 5% nationally for a couple of things that are really key and important. First one being physician communication and then patient satisfaction. And then lastly, we also are in the top 5% nationally for our low C difficile rates and the cleanliness of our hospital. And that is a really big deal. It means that we're using antibiotics appropriately as well as it means that, um, our patients, you know, they're not getting opportunistic infections while they're in the hospital. So that is just a really important accomplishment. We really want to recognize our environmental services staff for the great job that they do in keeping our hospital clean.
Nice.
Congratulations.
Any questions for us?
I don't have any. Anyone on board have any questions?
They're getting rather boring.
That's a good thing.
I, I think on Sunday, there'll be four or five food trucks there. So it should be a fun day.
Nice. Well, hope that all goes well.
Hope the weather is nice.
Yes.
Keep up the good work.
Yep.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right. We got a couple of minutes here before our conference call. Pal Alto, are we just doing that on the phone line? Okay. Do you want to get that set up there?
Brandon comes in, this, there's one in the packet. This is an additional one that just came in. So he said.
That's fine. Let's see if anything with the code for that one.
Join the conference as the host, press star. Otherwise, press pound. Please enter your host password, followed by the pound sign. There are two participants on the call, including you. You are joining your conference as the host. For a menu of available commands, press star, pound.
Hello, Pal Alto, are you there?
I think that's just us.
It said two.
Two, including us.
Good morning, can you hear us?
We're not on mute, are we?
We'll just wait a couple of minutes till eight fifteen and see if they say something. Just one here. All right.
Sorry about that. This is, this is Colin.
Oh, hey, Colin. Good morning.
Yeah, I can hear you, but I was getting another call and I was on mute. I just don't know how to stop it, like, you know, mute and stuff.
Yep, no worries. So he's recommending, stating?
That's what I think. He said he was supposed to call him when we get there. He'll come in the next spring.
Oh, I guess I, while we wait for Pal Alto to come on, I was gonna mention it during public discussion. I got a letter from Elder Bridge, so I'll pass that down. Carter read it before, but it's talking about some issues with their state funding and some stuff like that. So I'll let you all read that while we got a minute. Is this a paper copy of what was in our folder?
Yep.
Yes.
Yep, I've already looked at all that. Colin, are you still there or are you busy?
Yep, yep, I'm here.
Okay. I just, and we can talk about this during the hearing too, whenever Pal Alto is ready, but, um, in your addendum here, gonna try and find where you said it. Oh, never mind. Pal Alto.
Good morning.
All right, good morning. We have our full board here in Kasoot. Do you have your full board as well?
Yes, yes, yes.
Okay. And our auditor and drainage clerk are here, of course, as well too. So if, if you guys are ready, I would entertain a motion to open, or do we need a motion to open a hearing or just?
This is just set.
Just, okay. Yep.
This is in a hearing.
Yep, yep.
This is a classroom call.
Okay. Um, so Colin, I think I could turn it over to you to go through your report here. Amendment number two, if you're ready.
Morning, everybody. Yeah, so this is, this is amendment number two to the engineer's report. And we had had a, a hearing on July 23rd. Kind of what came out of that. And I'll try to be quick because I know there's special elections and stuff. So, but I'll try to touch on it quick. But kind of where things left from that meeting was that we were to go look and see what, you know, additional damages there was from 2024 flooding, specifically because there's disaster declarations and potential premium funding. And also just seeing what, what else is essentially wrong with the ditch as a result of the flooding. And so we did a drone flight in early August and I kind of, I compared that with, you know, the whole mid-drone flight that was from last, last summer in 2023. And then when we went out late last fall, late last year, we took pictures as well and did GPS stuff. So I had a lot of information to kind of cross reference. And really, I'm not saying there's zero additional damage or something, but a lot of it was like, well, it didn't, it didn't, if there was 100 feet of bank, bank sloping or bank failures, most of the time it wasn't really like, oh, now it's 200 feet or even 120 feet. It mostly just kept in the same spot. So really, by the time I got through that whole drone video and looking at everything, I was pretty convinced that there was, there was not, not enough damages to be worthwhile to even, even pursue 2024, profima funding for damages this year. And I talked to Leon Freeman about that. And he kind of was, he kind of was of the same, of the same thinking. And so that's, that's part, that's a big part of the support. It's kind of just including that, well, the good news is that there's not a lot of worse damages. And I guess the bad news is that maybe we're not getting FEMA funding, but the landlord would still have to pay 15% of whatever, whatever work was done. So it kind of depends on how you look at it, I guess. So that's that piece. So we actually did not go out there, um, with four-wheelers and stuff like that, which was a good thing cost-wise. I was, I was glad that we were able to do a drone flight and be able to get a little heated from that. Kind of as an aside, I will point out, I think at the, at the hearing, there was an objection or a comment, a written comment that was talking about trees growing back again. And I could see that pretty well in this drone video, especially in the area, you know, where you're close to Widdmore, kind of up and down Street, Widdmore. There, there's quite a few small trees that are, that are growing that to be good, just as an aside, to get those sprayed and healed before they get any orders. We also went through and kind of tried to narrow down what we consider to be the most severe damages that really are in need of, of being fixed really soon. And so I did, we identified those. I got like 43 sites. And that doesn't include pipes, which I think if we do, if we end up doing just severe damages, I think the pipe, like the pipe, there's some that are bent, a lot of those. If you remember, I feel like we could actually just cut off a little bit off the end of most of those. And then that'd be fine, but there's kind of smashed. The ends are smashed in. Uh, so a cost estimate for that, just running through it real quick. Um, if we did, out of all those sites, if we did riprap, I'm estimating a total project cost of $760,000. I, I did look and thought, well, some of these, maybe we could still do bank shaping and slope back two to one to these areas and do it for a lesser cost. Um, estimated project cost of $557,000. Now, with, with that, some of these are the severe sites. So if we slope the bank back, there'd be quite a bit of land lost to the channel. So that's kind of a, a balance call of that. And then I did include in that cost estimate and estimated $70,000, which is a rough, rough number for potential damage reimbursement and right-of-way accidents. We kind of have to see heat on that. So that's, now we're up to one, two, three. Options one, two, three, four A and four B. For the overall, you know, with the engineers, four A and one, and now this is two. I, I, as kind of an aside, one of the options we had looked at was slope the bank back kind of for the lower two-thirds of the length of the ditch. We do have that permit from the Iowa E and R with the flood plain permit to do that work. So that's if we decide to go that route. Go ahead, what, what's that? Did you, I just want you to know if somebody doesn't want to do that. I think the cost was, from the hearing, the cost was the biggest concern with that. I, I believe, what do we have? Two and a half million dollars was the cost estimate. And that was the, that was major.
Just ask if one person, they're gonna lose that much right away or that amount of claim. That's what I'm asking. What if one or two people go on a new bathroom? Like, like the plan B?
I, yeah, I get what you're saying. Um.
Does the landlord, the landlord stop that project?
I. I think, I think I can maybe touch on this.
I guess what I say, they can't, they, it's not their decision. However, I mean, there's multiple ways to try to fix the ditch manes, if that makes sense. And so if you have a choice of riprap, but it costs more money and bank shaping, and it's less money, but it takes away land, that's, that we have to talk through. I mean, that's, if somebody just looks at the dollars, like, oh, yeah, pick, pick the cheaper one. Oh, it's not that, not quite that good. But that's just something we have to talk through.
Okay, okay. Keep going, keep going.
Uh, it's really, really the only other thing, I guess, is I did talk a little, expand on, there was a discussion about spreading the repairs out over time. And I said that I've had heard of that happening. I did some more thinking about that. And really, because, because of how ingrained interest and ability to pay overtime, if you, if you do a large single project and you have that upfront cost, it's still, you can still spread it over time. And yes, there's interest accruing. But it's sort of like, like paying for it over time. And it's, and one thing with doing one single project is that to me, it's more cost efficient for two reasons. One, you're paying mobilization once, you know, paying somebody to haul their equipment in and out all the time. And then also, there's a bidding process. So you have, you have competition basically to get the work. So anyway, that, the code really doesn't make provisions or repairs spread overtime or budgeting for that. It just requires that when repairs are necessary, they be done. So if, if the, the cost of repairs will exceed $50,000, you probably all know this, then you have to send notices and have it here. And the code specifically prohibits dividing repairs in order to avoid the elements that here require them. But that was just an expanded discussion on that. In the end, I'm still, I'm still recommending the option where we flatten the bank. It's, it's higher upfront cost. But I think once that's done, um, in the long run, it's gonna be the most cost efficient solution because if we, yeah, the other ones, you know, you try to cheapen up the upfront cost, but there's gonna be more of them. Just for example, if we did only the severe damages, well, if we left a bunch of other stuff that's kind of, it could go either way. You have to keep watching and see, well, does it heal up? Or does it get worse? And now we have to do something. That's, that's a very real. So that's, that's kind of the summary of this amendment two to the report. And so now, yeah, today, basically just intensively accepting it or acknowledging it, and you can seize it and then setting a date time for, for the hearing.
Hey, Colin, this is, this is Kyle Sucker here in Kasoot. Um, the one thing I was gonna touch on with you before is on page two of your report, you have, as an aside, we note that on the 2024 drone flight, several damaged sites were previously identified and in 2023, and they appear to have improved in condition. Have you looked at any of those, like physically in person? Because I've seen multiple times where they visually look like they're better because they're covered in grass, but they're broken in the bank. And I, I don't know that I would call that healed myself. To me, it's a, it's a vulnerability that's gonna continue ongoing until it's actually addressed.
Yeah. Did not go out there in person to look at. It's, but yeah, it's just, it's the first I view. You're right. I mean, there's, the ones that I'm viewing as being, looking like they're in better condition are the ones that were minor, minor damages to begin with, but not like these big holes that I'm saying, well, they look healed because they've got grass now. And it's, but there's still a hole under, a big hole underneath there. It, it does tell, obviously, that there's established there to help hold it. But you're right, if you've got a giant hole or a vertical sheer, that's still part of the damages in the future. But I, I didn't go through and like take a bunch of ice out of that. Like I left the cost estimates from the previous report the way they are. If we did, if we did somebody's bigger repair option project, we'd have to evaluate those. We'd have to go out there, you know, as we were gonna do the work and then you could make a call while we're out there. Like, no, this is, this is fine now, but we'd have to actually look at. It just, that was just a kind of a side comment. I was making, it does appear that some of them maybe are in better shape than what, what they were when we looked at them in, you know, late 2023. I, I, I beg you, I get, I get your point.
Okay, yep. And I, I guess I just kind of wanted to start a little conversation there because I, I do follow your thought process on all these repair options, but I do kind of agree with you on option three being the best long-term solution. It is a hefty upfront price tag, but I think it's, in my opinion, I think it's the only viable long-term solution, riprap. I've seen that even be damn. I've seen that even be damaged in severe rains, but like, I compared this project to one we had in the north end of the county, similar timeframe, similar, uh, kind of actually similar construction costs and the whole nine yards. And DD four held up beautifully this spring when we had, and summer when we had heavy rains that came fast and then disappeared. Um, that ditch, I did not see any further damage anywhere that I've looked yet. Um, and that is two to one side slopes, which this area actually, I think, some of the really sandy places probably need to be more three to one, especially where it's already hanging out a chunk of the bank. But, um, I don't know that we're going to do ourselves any favors by doing option four A or four B, because es- especially, four B is cheaper and probably better of the two. But if you widen the bank out and then it comes back in, and then you widen it out again, I think all those places in between are going to be, either the edges or in between are going to be vulnerable in the next targets of, of major rain event. So, I don't know, that's, that's kind of my thoughts, but I, I don't, I don't really think the ditch healed. Um, I do think vegetation getting established helped in some ways, but, um, you can't put the dirt back after it breaks apart.
Still going to have to take input from the people that are going to pay the price.
Right, and, and we need to schedule a hearing and stuff and go there, but I guess that's, that's one of my thoughts and concerns with the.
Making a decision on what to do, we, we better get some input from the people that are going to have to pay for it.
Yeah, and we.
Colin, keep, keep working on the question here.
Colin, I was just wondering, if, if, so on that spot, if you use rip wrap that, doesn't that stabilize the, the, the bubble that keeps it from flooding, or?
Yeah. But what I think, rip wrap, rip wrap isn't, there's times where rip wrap can fail. I mean, it, it, you hope it lasts forever, but it also does, it's things like, well, you put this rip wrap in, and then later, when you have a big storm, it kind of can't beat up the water, and then up and down streams, sides, it tends to get damaged. Saw here where that repair project was done two years back, and last year with that flood, there was quite a bit of damage we observed on the up, up and down streams of the rip wrap that was going in, like it's a new damage, just to jake it to it, and we're, we're going to end up calling for additional rip wrap. So it's, it's, it's a good solution, but I don't think it's perfect. But it does, that's, it is kind of the point, you, you put it on the, on the bottom, and then you, you're trying to hold, hold the bottom of that bank together, so that it holds the bank above it. You don't cover the whole bank, kind of do lower about six feet. And then it, it's supposed to hold up the bank above. Thank, thank you.
But when do anyone set a hearing date?
Does anyone have any date in mind?
Well, I don't know if we want to go to the middle of October, otherwise, um, November.
Are you trying to do some of this, would get this fall, or what are you thinking about that?
Well, my hope was to get it started this fall. I think the fact that, you know, we continued it from the July twenty third to now, or whenever we have a hearing, that, that kind of probably made it difficult to get anything done this fall, because we still have to have hearings, and we have to do plans and specs.
Lost man?
It'd be a stretch, I think, at this point, to expect that much work would be done this year and, and on course.
What's the earliest that we can have the hearing come to, yeah, today?
Let's see, it'd be twenty days from when the notices could be mailed and published in the newspapers. I don't know, would it be like next Thursday?
They have to do new notices by the day.
It could get the newspapers, or?
Yeah.
It'd be twenty days from that, from the nineteenth?
The last paper that was announced was twenty sixth.
Right.
Okay.
Oh.
What's the dates of ours, or is it?
Twenty fifth and twenty sixth.
Okay, yeah, so our papers would be twenty fifth and twenty sixth, too, Tammy said?
Over the twenty second.
Sorry.
Yeah.
It would be the nineteenth.
Oh, okay. Fifteenth of October, that would be the earliest?
It's like, it's like the nineteenth, so, yeah.
Twenty second of October.
I don't know, I mean, it's pretty, pretty, I probably didn't do that yesterday.
Fifteenth of October, I think would be the earliest.
Yeah, we want to give it a week.
Landowners aren't going to be happy about it, though.
No. We have our public test that day, and that is hoping the.
I think you better opt to go to November and let some of the harvests get done.
Uh, what about like November fifth?
That's election day.
That's election. Yeah, no, that is a, no, a big fat.
Sorry, try again, twelve.
Put the kibosh on them.
They, they both did, I wasn't, I wasn't thinking that far.
I, I think you better go November twelfth.
November twelfth?
Is there, is there any issues or concerns with the twelfth? You'd go the nineteenth?
I'm fine with that, you're not going to get anything done this year anyhow.
Yeah, yeah.
Do you want it, for the class hearing over there in Kassuth, or?
Yeah, that would probably work, yeah. Um, on the nineteenth?
Yeah.
Is that what we're aiming for?
Do we need a motion on that?
Yeah.
We do.
I would move that we do the hearing on, P K one on ten o'clock on the nineteenth of November.
Here, okay. Um, we have a motion from Roger Jarks that we do, the, that we set the time and date for ten AM on November nineteenth at the Kassuth County, um, boardroom.
Right.
Um, is there a second from Palo Alto on that?
He would second that motion.
Perfect, thanks, Keith. Um, is there any discussion on that motion?
Are you going to have it in the boardroom or the election center?
In the boardroom.
We can hold it in the board.
Okay.
Um, all right, any other discussion or questions on that motion? If not, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All ayes here in Kassuth?
All ayes here, Palo Alto.
Perfect, thank you, motion carries unanimous. Um, anything else for this topic here right now with Colin? All right, if not, thank you all, and we will see you then.
Yeah, thanks everyone.
Yep, thanks, see ya. All right, um, okay. Marge, you have a, some stuff in our packet for procedures for joint drainage districts?
Yeah.
Run through that quick. Saw a sample in our packet.
Yeah, it was something that was suggested, and, um, um, Hancock County, I said they're not planning to do that. It's a memorandum of understanding between joint counties that have joint drains.
Okay.
And the control county, um, could, this is saying, um.
I think it kind of just does.
Anything, yeah, if you had a chance to look at it.
Yeah.
Um, to take care of any costs up, up to or less than fifteen thousand, and then anything that would need more, you'd have a joint call between the two, which we do kind of anyway, so.
The dollar figure would probably be the only point of discussion, since our repair threshold is so much higher now, too.
Right.
Did one of the counties request that we do this with them?
Um, Winnebago did ask, and has a, has a form to fill out.
Okay.
And they've also asked Hancock County, Hancock County said they're not interested, because there's two counties that want to and two that don't, that they deal with. So, I just wanted to ask you guys.
Do you guys have any thoughts?
Um, do you guys want to reach out to him under Palo Alto?
Not yet, I was going to see what your thoughts were before I approached them, to see what they were thinking.
We're kind of adding to the drainage law, I don't know.
Yeah, I mean.
Do it or not, I'm.
Yeah, and the way we do it currently is.
It's just going to.
I think it.
Some of our repairs.
Well, I think it would be, if it, if we kind of match it to our internal drainage policy, that has fifty thousand as a limit for repairs, because that's our public hearing threshold and stuff.
Sure, sure.
If, if we had it at fifty thousand, I think it would be simple and make sense. Um, and I think it would be something that any new board members could look at and kind of know how things operate as a black and white document, like our policies. Um, so I think there could be advantages, but if you have multiple things at different thresholds, I think it makes it confusing.
I, I go back to, where Winnebago has fifteen miles of surface green and dumps into the dredge ditch at the edge of Kassuth County, and dumps all our corn stalks into our grid, and we have to clean it about every three years. It's more than fifteen thousand, and it's all they're doing.
Yeah, I guess that would probably be my biggest thing, is making sure that dollar amounts don't cause more headaches than benefit. But otherwise, just knowing that we're on the same page between boards, I think, is good.
Actually, if it's over fifty thousand, we should be, you know, applying.
Well, that's when you have to go to a public hearing anyway, so.
Do it anyhow, so I, I don't know why we should have a, maybe a memorandum of understanding, all right, but I think we already do it.
Yeah, for sizable, this would actually just be an earlier threshold, but, which I don't know is that beneficial. I don't know.
I would be, so.
So you thought, or probably not go ahead with this, or?
I mean, if it matched fifty thousand, I think it'd be fine, but if it's going to be a different threshold, I think it would be a headache more than a benefit. Any other thoughts from the board?
I don't think it accomplishes anything.
Probably not.
I think if you have a sizable repair project between a joint drain, it's only right that you call them.
Right, yeah.
Have a conversation with them, but I don't think we need, really need a memorandum of understanding on it. I think we should do what we, what's right, and I think that's what we've been doing, so.
Yeah.
There hasn't been.
I don't think.
Issue is up to this point?
I don't think it'll, I don't think it'll change a whole lot. I don't think the document's bad if it doesn't add another burden, but.
Right.
I mean, the document's okay, it's just.
I think there's some drains in where we have a little confusion on who's the lead county.
And this would spell that out, which would potentially be handy, because you'd have Kassuth County control districts, and then our neighbors, they'd all be listed, so that would probably be a benefit, um, just knowledge wise.
I think that, that goes back to the drainage for some point to be.
Keeping communication.
On top of it. Who's, who's the lead county on the drain?
I don't know, I guess, I'm not strongly opposed, I'm not strong for it, I just, it depends on how it's structured, to me. Jack, you got any thoughts?
I, I don't think we've had a problem with.
Before.
Before, I mean, we, we've talked to them, so like, just another layer of fluff that you got to go through.
Josh, Carter, me.
Fix what ain't broke?
Okay, well, I guess.
Josh, how many joint drains do you have?
Yeah.
He's got one.
Zero.
Fifty one.
No, he said.
Joint drain.
Joint drains.
Oh, joint drains, oh, yeah, you're right.
He went, he went joint drains.
You're kind of the lead county on your drain.
Yeah, good, good question. All right, well, I guess that sounds like it's not a heavily desired thing, so.
Just discussions.
Yeah.
If the five counties surrounding us wanted to do it, I'd say, okay, fine, but if I hear nothing from all five of them, I'm, I'm fine not doing anything.
I mean, if Winnebago really wants to do it, we can talk about it then, and we can talk about a dollar figure, but I, yeah. That'd be my only thing, because it, it just gets confusing, but yeah, we'll leave it. We'll leave her there for today, some discussion. Then we got a repair request, it looks like.
It's raining.
Oh, boy, yep, it's raining. I hope it doesn't get up to my house.
The sun's shining, and it's raining.
Well, we're up to a hundred and two on drainage requests.
And the year, and we haven't even got to harvest yet.
We haven't got a lot of them found yet. Got a broken tile, needs repair, two large holes, patent wire signed, it's on drain one thirty-three. It's in Seneca Township, and. Looks like it's in the field waves, did he want to wait till harvest, or did he say?
I would think yet about anything at this time, I'd probably.
Sure.
Yeah, you could check with him.
Probably have rights, we'll do it tomorrow.
Okay.
All right, is there a motion for supervisors to take care of their requests? Jack had his hand up first, and Josh will take that as a second. Um, any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Motion carries unanimous. Um, anything else for drainage, Marge?
We did, we did good.
We got a couple more lawsuits from Joe Goshi?
They're kind of the same ones, he had already put in a preliminary one. We already answered that and put our information to the court.
For the open ditch on four?
Yeah, he had, he had filed that like in June, something.
Okay.
We answered that, and then this is an official notice. This, so I don't know if it's.
I would have thought we would have had to have been served before we answered.
I do, too, I do, too.
We need to make sure that it's the same case.
Yeah, so.
I, I think they're different.
Yeah, I think.
Do I, gotta make sure with Goodwin?
I did, I talked to him, and he's looking it over, because he's, he was of the same opinion. We already answered that one, and so whether they wanted to renew what they were filing for.
Yeah, there was some, there was something that he refiled.
Yeah.
They were in agreement and refiled, and we had Goodwin accept service for that, but I think this one's different.
Okay, so he's looking it over to see what we, our next.
Because I think the other ones before were lateral four, and I don't remember which other one he had sued us for at that time, but can't keep track of.
The last two were both on DD four, though.
Yeah, yeah, the most recent one in June.
I was thinking that this was a new lawsuit on the open ditch.
It is, because that has the seven hundred, I know one of the papers had a seven hundred thousand.
That was from, from the May.
And this is two different cases, this has two different case numbers.
And what's the other ones say, I don't?
DD four, lap four.
The other ones, lap four?
That says lap four, that's the original one that we're giving depositions on. Now, this is open ditch.
No, that's lap two.
Lap two?
Yeah.
Josh, can I look through your papers if you have a chance?
So this one says lap four.
I have mine at home. I don't know where to find it.
And this one's D four, open ditch.
Yeah, so this is lateral four.
This one's the open ditch, that one's the.
I know the other one's open ditch.
Mm-hmm, so Goodwin's looking in to see what the next steps would be.
Yeah, we had to make sure we have responses for both of those. Yeah, we gotta make sure we have responses for both of those.
Yeah.
Um, I guess another note for drainage, there was some questions from Joe Goshi and Harlan harms in regards to. And I'm assuming this is Joe's question as well, but when I visited with Harlan, he said they were wondering what the assessments for DD eighty were for. Because no work was being done on the ditch and, and all that. So I visited with Marge and asked the question of what those invoices were for, for that assessment, just to clarify that, and I have a stack of papers at home for it. There was a small bill from B and W for spraying trees and over twenty thousand dollars of attorney bills for Joe Goshi's lawsuit that we took to Supreme Court, so. For the knowledge of that, I guess it might be some, if there is a, if there's other landowners in that district. That have those same questions, I guess my quick thoughts are we could potentially have an informational meeting. Or send out a letter to some extent to inform people, but I think it'd be good to. Clarify what those expenses are for, since we don't have any actual construction project that it, it is associated with. And I think that's something members of the districts probably have not been informed very well on previously is all these lawsuits. Especially by one person, um, until the assessment or the bills come, or maybe people pay attention watching these videos. Or watching the minutes and stuff in the paper. If they didn't pay attention to any of those other options, they could be a landowner in a district and have no idea that the district is being sued. So, um, I think that's something we should probably keep in mind for all of these districts now. But this one in particular, we had an assessment largely related to legal expenses. And that's probably something we should inform the rest of the district about.
So you wanna do that in a form of a letter to drain eighty?
I guess it could go either way. I don't wanna be the only one writing a letter necessarily, but I think a public hearing. Or an informational meeting, we don't have, if we did informational, we wouldn't have to do publication in the paper, it would just be letters, but.
Too expensive to add.
That's adding more expense, yeah.
Load out or card out. How much you put it for a discussion next?
Hmm, a discussion on it next week and then we can try and draft a letter.
Right, so that we don't. Be able to day with not having anything on the agenda.
Well, and yeah, it wouldn't be for any action today, just discussing.
If we send letters, it'd be an action.
That would be an action.
So let's put it on for discussion, decision.
Next week about DD eighty assessment?
DD eighty assessment, and I think you can also do drain four, lap two, lap four attorney fees, or don't you want to?
I mean, we could do all of them, but, um, at the end of the day, that was the one in particular that the question arose from. And then, I guess the follow-up question to that is if we do these other districts, do we just send a letter? Do we send out, and this is food for thought for everyone, do we send a letter, do we send the invoices that are associated as copies? What all do we entail in that notification?
We'll have a discussion next week.
But, yeah.
I don't think anybody understands that when somebody sues a drainage district, the drainage district pays for the attorney fees.
I, yeah.
Something that has to be brought across to the general public.
That was, that was my point. I think we're paying a lot of legal fees, especially for these cases that the other members of the district don't know what's going on.
Right.
Um, so I think we could do better in that regard, so how we get to that point is open for discussion, but I think that is something we could. Improve upon going forward for communication.
How do you want it listed on the agenda? Just DD eighty assessment, or do you want others listed?
I think let's start there, and if we come up with a plan from there, we could expand it maybe.
Well, you could do that on a separate meeting. Let's take care of eighty next, next week.
Yeah.
And then we'll have a little discussion on drain four, what we're doing and how much we're pending and then.
Well, if, if we, if we come up with a plan for eighty on how we notify that, then we could replicate it from there. So let's start with just that for eighty, so, yep, thanks.
Yep.
Alright, anything else for drainage at the top of people's heads right now? Alright, if not, thanks, Marge.
Thank you, Marge.
I'll bring you some Beamer tail papers.
Okay.
Beepers are still busy.
Yeah, alright, Brandon, we got.
I'll have some for you today too.
Homestead, P O letters, if you wanna come on up?
Yeah.
Morning.
Morning, guys. So we got a letter in the mail for Patricia Bodie. Um, it's included in your packet there, and then I also included, um, the code section four twenty-five point eleven there. Paragraph D where it states that you have to, um, reside in a dwelling in good faith for, for at least six months, and it seems that she still has not met that. So, um, I had drafted a letter that said that she still will be denied, and then it gives the explanation of that code and why, why was someone denying it?
Is there any questions from the board on that?
I think it's fairly clear that she wasn't there on the first of July.
Yeah, I mean, her letter even says till May eleventh, so I mean, it just doesn't meet the definition.
Yeah, it doesn't meet the criteria, so we have no other.
Yeah, um, there's also a second one here, if you wanna read that or?
Yes, we, we got a second one in the mail yesterday from Buchanan's office, and it's Cynthia Newman. And it, and it explains that, you know, uh, her husband had died and they kind of winter in, in Texas, but they filed their taxes and they do all their voting in Iowa, so. Um, I had drafted a le- letter for Kyle that we reinstate that.
Okay, set it. Yeah, um, so is there any questions on either of those for the board? Okay, if not, the recommended motions would be to keep the one for Patricia Bodie denied. And to reinstate the one for Cynthia Newman, or Norman. Is there any questions on that? Otherwise, I would entertain a motion. That effect?
Yeah.
Okay. Alright, um, do we have a second? Okay, is there any discussion on that motion? One would be approved to reinstate and the other stays denied. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Alright, motion carried unanimous, we will get those.
Alright, thank you guys, Jeff, thanks Brandon.
Thank you. Yes, that is. So do they have another time to appeal?
I don't know about this letter, you'll have to ask him.
Well, I'll double check with him after the meeting. Um, alright. Next up is, uh, cell phone reimbursement. Uh, Tammy, do you wanna talk about that?
So, uh, community service director Dale Briggs had reached out to me and, um, he had knew, he knew that we have a twenty-five dollar reimbursement. Policy for employees that use their cell phones, uh, for their jobs. He uses his to contact, um, those people on community service as well as some other tasks that he uses. And he wanted to know if we could get reimbursed for that. I said, you guys are his department head and you would have to approve that. So that's why we're here today is to decide if you wanna approve him being reimbursed twenty-five dollars a month for using his personal cellphone to do county business.
Did he say if he was able to come over for this conversation or anything, or if he's around?
I don't know.
I'm sorry, he was lying out in budget.
Yeah, I mean, it would be out of that budget.
Although he is department head.
He doesn't have another department head.
Oh. Well, my, one of my questions would be, is there a reason his cellphone couldn't be used or has to be used instead of a landline or work phone that we would have?
I think he has a lot of after hour calls with people saying, you know, when, can I do this, can I do that, or maybe they're working after hours for their community service.
Can't always deny, just give it to him, how may I do this? Make a motion that you allow it.
Okay, is there a second to that motion? Roger. Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Motion carried unanimous. Alright. Next, we have some transfers that are in the packet. Has everyone seen those? Are there any questions or anything you wanna say in there, Tammy?
Nope, first one of the new fiscal year, so.
Okay, um, Carter, do you wanna call Doug and make him acknowledge the?
We need five minutes, right?
Tell him, yeah, give Doug a call and tell him we'll be ready in five minutes. And, yeah, well, I said let the record reflect the transfers, right? Yeah, yeah, over.
Yeah, good morning, Doug. We'll, we'll be ready in five ten minutes here. Alright, yeah, thanks.
Morning.
You got any just for anything, Doug?
What's that?
You got any just for anything? So making appearance.
We'll probably.
Thanks for your presence.
Yeah, we'll probably talk about that stuff here, um, when Doug comes up with his engineer stuff, so if you wanna hang around, you could.
Okay.
Um, he's got a list of projects in our folder they just put in this morning. So I'm sure we'll talk about that in conjunction with the TIF, so if you'd.
Okay.
If you'd like to, you could.
Keep me out of the office.
There you go.
Bang.
You've got nowhere else more exciting to be.
There you go.
I gotta be in for Dodge, but.
You probably don't wanna head down there quite yet, do ya?
No, I don't have to be there till eleven, but I'll be there till five.
Oh, yeah, that'll be fun.
Long day.
Better not say that's on a recorded line here.
Why don't you just crack that, maybe, like, not either the agenda item, I speak about the DD eighty?
Yeah.
What would be, so they're getting, the drainage district is, no, supervisors are getting, right?
Oh, the district is getting.
Okay.
We act as trustees of ordinance by default if they don't have their own trustees, but the county drainage district are possibly separate, separate people.
Okay, I'm happy to.
Well, he is suing us in our capacity as trustees, but I am, but he is, it's, it's district that's responsible. That is legally responsible for all of it. He labels us as supervisory, but we're not, so it's accounting if any office. We're district trustees.
Well, we're meeting the amount of.
We'll talk about that if you want to.
Oh, so you're not gonna have a meeting with them next week, you're just gonna talk about how you wanna do that? Okay, so.
They could, they could.
Oh, I didn't think so, but I.
We could do a informal hearing of what. Close it.
Right.
We could get a letter.
They don't know that you had it.
I like those articles in the county magazine. It is half article, half advertisement.
I know. I'm not even sure if half. It might be.
Right here.
Three quarters advertisement.
So right here is where, like, the articles and information stop, right here?
Yeah.
Right there is where.
Ad advertisement.
Ads, ads all start, so it's literally half.
Crazy.
Well, they gotta fund it somehow, I guess.
I guess.
Are you excited today?
Pardon me?
Are you excited today?
Yeah.
Alright, Doug, I think we are ready for the second reading of the solar moratorium.
Alright, here's a motion to approve that.
Thank you.
Do you have the whole, whole thing to read out?
I could, if you would like.
Otherwise, I can go back in our packet. If you got it and you wanna read it, that'd be fine.
Okay.
I.
Uh, this would be Cassoot County zoning ordinance amendment. Uh, the title of the amendment is an ordinance amending the Cassoot County Iowa zoning ordinance imposing a nine-month moratorium on the processing of any applications. To construct large-scale or utility-scale solar energy systems or associated facilities anywhere in Cassoot County. Uh, findings, the Cassoot County Board of Supervisors, upon the recommendations of the Cassoot County Planning and Zoning Commission, hereby make the following fines. One, whereas Cassoot County has recently been approached by several entities interested in constructing large-scale, i.e. Greater than twenty acres or utility scale, i.e. energy. energy produced is primarily intended to be distributed to the electrical power grid for use by the public. Solar energies in the county. And number two, whereas such systems involve the installation of light and solar panels above and associated above and/or below ground connection and transmission lines, miscellaneous electrical equipment, as well as access roads. And whereas, number three, whereas, the installation of said systems necessarily impacts the county's public infrastructure, including roads and drainage facilities. And number four, whereas, once installed, said systems impact the visual landscape as well as the use of the land in and around the large-scale or utility-scale solar energy systems and associated facilities. And number five, whereas, the officers of Cassuth County and the entities desiring to construct such systems deserve a thoughtful process and default regulations concerning the placement and operation of such systems in Cassuth County. And the board requires adequate time to address those parties' concerns before drafting and adopting such regulations. And number six, whereas, the board, consistent with the recommendation of the Cassuth County Planning and Zoning Commission, believes that a short-term moratorium on the processing of any request to construct a large-scale or utility-scale solar energy system in the county is necessary and proper in order for the board to seek public and professional input from interested parties and consider potential changes to the county's comprehensive plan and/or land use regulations to address new circumstances and technologies that are not currently adequately addressed therein. And number seven, whereas during the moratorium period, the board will solicit input from all interested parties concerning the proper regulation of large-scale or utility-scale solar energy systems in Cassuth County. Wherefore, the Cassuth County Board of Supervisors hereby issues a moratorium of nine months duration and depending upon the final passage of this ordinance during which the county will not accept or process any applications for the construction of large-scale utilities... Large-scale or utility-scale solar energies.
Alright, that's everything Doug?
That is.
Okay. I'd make a motion to approve the second reading. Is there a second to that motion?
I'll second it.
Okay, is there any discussion on that motion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed say nay? Motion carried unanimous? Roger, did you want to abstain?
Yeah.
I, okay, I just wanted to check, I thought you were before, so... Alright. So, we'll have one abstain on that vote. Right-of-way, you had some things in the folder there Doug?
Yeah, there are a couple of requests for working the road right-of-way. The first one that I am going to address, Interstate Power in Light of Armstrong, they have a... Four places where they like to remove overhead lines and poles and install underground power. And it's from Highway one sixty-nine, moving east and west in Cassuth County, a road right-of-way on four ninety, four eighty, four seventy street. All the work is in Springfield and Hebron Township, section twelve and twenty-five of Springfield, section thirty of Hebron. And I would recommend that the board would approve of this. Cassuth County, secondary road department staff will be meeting with them to try to verify where county drainage district facilities are located to try to eliminate any kind of a damage being done to those in the road right-of-way.
Okay.
I got a quick question here.
Sure.
In your motion, you've got section twelve and twenty-five, on the map it shows section thirteen and twenty-five.
Section thirteen is shown there.
I just didn't know which one was.
I think it's actually, it would not be sections twelve at all. It'd be section twenty-five of Springfield Township and section thirty of Hebron. So I would delete, the work will be completed within sections twenty-five Springfield Township...
In order to section thirteen right there on four ninety, does that fall, what section does that fall in?
Oh, excuse me, that would be section twelve.
That is section twelve?
Yeah.
Just because it's on the north side?
I'm sorry, yes. So that, the north side of, that's not actually, it's the north side of thirteen, it'd be the south side of section twelve.
Okay.
Of Springfield Township, I'm sorry. So that is reading correctly.
Okay.
Alright, I'd make a motion to approve. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed say nay? Motion carried unanimous?
It's okay with you Kyle, I'll bring these up.
Yeah, that's fine. You have another one there?
Yeah, West Bend Municipal Utilities, they need, they are running a underground to a home in the northwest quarter of section fifteen of Garfield Township. They need to place a box, a junction box underground in the road right-of-way of one hundred forty street, the South Road Right-of-Way. I would recommend that the board would approve of this as well.
Okay, is there a motion to that effect?
I'd move to approve.
Okay, I'll second that. Is there any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed say nay? Motion carried unanimous. Is that all for right-of-way?
That is all, a request for working the road right-of-way.
Okay.
There's one there. Thank you.
Thank you. Alright.
Alright, thank you.
Thanks. Alright, we can roll into your discussion.
One thing, we talked about Jerome Wyder Family Farm Park partnership a couple of weeks ago. That road crossing, everything's been canceled on that. So they went to a different alternative, so we will no longer need anything on that. The construction, a bridge down by Dana Arndorfer's, they got the north pier pile driven and the pier cap was poured. They'll be working to remove the north abutment of the existing bridge now so that they can drive the north abutment and get that four slope all prepared. FEMA, we are continuing to work our office identifying locations for DR forty-seven eight four and forty-seven ninety-six. We continue to meet weekly with FEMA to get all that information going on that. We are mowing roads, the road department is. The Wind Farm TIF, I left road resurfacing projects in the folder there, I do need to hit the location map. I don't know which ones of those, if you want to include any of those in a plan, but I think I got projects from nineteen ninety, that were constructed in nineteen ninety-nine through two thousand and eight there, and I think it adds up to about forty-eight million dollars. Structures, I still need to get a table put together for that and get a location map for the plan. I guess the internal loan, is the board still planning to do an internal loan for that?
I think that's our only option time-wise unless we get moving on projects pretty quick.
Where will that internal loan be coming from?
I think our rural basic is the only fund that has any, has the capacity to borrow. I don't know if the board, any of the rest of the board members have any thoughts?
That's the way I understood it.
Will there be any consequences of taking an internal loan from that, that fund? Has that been discussed?
Consequences in what aspect?
Well, a couple, I believe it was March of this year, the board was talking that there was no money. And there was a lot of, lot of reductions in budgets. And especially secondary roads. And secondary roads has construction projects, has equipment. And I hope the board will make sure that there are not negative consequences to taking money from that fund. And if there was money made available, I think that we've talked about it in budget, it's... Why are, why are we reducing services to the, to the traveling public?
Well, this would be different than just straight up spending the money on a one-year budget. If we do a loan that would be repaid by the TIF district, those funds coming in would replenish the funds that went out in the form of a loan, rather than just expending those dollars, so...
It's not going to come in in a year though. It's going to be over multiple years.
Six hundred to seven hundred thousand would be next year, based on that projection. So, I guess, I don't know. I don't, I don't think any of our other funds have the capability to borrow with an internal loan.
Well, I would, I would ask that the board make sure that there aren't unintended consequences to do with that loan. The other thing is, if, if that loan is coming out of rural services, will all the expenditures have to be according to DIO code is what, what is defined in rural services?
You'd have to spend all the money that the TIF district did for that million dollar loan back into the same rural services.
Yeah, so if it was road projects, which we're talking about a bridge, that's what it would be for.
You couldn't spend it away from, out of the rural services.
Right.
With the whole, with the whole TIF then. And any, any additional dollars that are spent for...
I don't...
I don't know the answer to that one, but I think only certain projects would qualify to begin with, most of them being in rural services anyway, but...
I, I don't believe that that would make the entirety of the TIF district be responsible for, or have to come out of rural services. But if that loan was for a specific project, that project would need to be, I would understand that.
Would have to be identified in the urban renewal plan as to the internal loan amount and what is being spent.
Yeah, the debt would be identified for a project. Yeah, correct. But the, the urban renewal area, I believe, could have other projects that'd be listed, but you would have to have the financing for those projects before you would be able to build them.
That'd come from a different source.
Right, the money would have to come from a different source, I would, I would agree with that.
But you can't have, you'd have to have a funding coming from some other source.
Yeah, and I'm assuming we're talking about the grant stands for the fair?
We're talking about any project that's other than...
I mean, that's the only thing that's been discussed that wouldn't be rural.
You wouldn't be able to pay that out of there.
No, and that would be something that we would need to go through the binding process, but we would still be able to list that as a project.
And then I guess, time constraints, visiting, I know the engineer staff, we have FEMA going on right now, we're trying to design for next year. We have a lot of work, I think it's pretty obvious, the auditors office, they have a lot of work. Have, has the board discussed with staff the ability to get all the work done? Get the work completed in order to do this? We will be, in order to complete all of this, we're on a pretty finite timeline.
Has anything been started on it yet?
Yes, we did, we...
I gave a list of projects.
We met Luke, Doug and I, and went over, we have a good start on it, but there's so much involved, you know, there's Lakota and Ledyard, that two-mile proximities, we're going to have to find out of core with, as in, some of those are within two miles, and how do we handle a city that's outside the county? You know, there's just so much involved, and, and none of us have the time to sit down for a whole day and go over it. I have a general election coming up, we're starting absentee voting October sixteenth, we're already receiving ballot requests, plus the regular duties our office does, so it's hard to take the time to get it done. And we don't want to miss something or make a mistake because we're rushed.
Any thoughts from the board?
Have you visited with a county that's currently going through that process, like Clay County?
We haven't had time.
I mean, just to, obviously they've got a lot going on too, with different FEMA projects and such, and what their process has looked like time-wise and, and what's realistic or not. They have a lot more FEMA than we do, for obvious reasons, but...
I would think so, yeah.
I, I don't know.
The district takes a lot of time.
I know, and that's what I'm saying. Counties that are working towards that as well.
I think Doug can candidly understand the basic principles of the TIF and what needs to be done, it's not that they don't understand it, it's whether they can get it all done and they're comfortable with what they do to make sure it's right. Because if you do a wrong start, then it's wrong.
Yeah, there's, there's public hearings, there's cities to contact, there's publishing, you know, and we don't want to...
That wouldn't be your responsibility for contacting cities and all that, that's something that the attorneys can do. They needed the basic information to get started, and I guess that was my understanding.
Yeah, I think...
Correct me if I'm wrong, but...
...for is legal description and stuff.
Yeah, we had the example from Clay County, they needed projects, and they needed the legal descriptions of the turbines. It's a basic set of information.
What projects are you, what, what projects are, are, does the board want included in the plan?
Well, I guess...
I gotta get a list of bridges as well, I, I would like to make a list of bridges that within the next ten years need to be replaced, I have not had an opportunity to do that.
I guess maybe that's the place the board needs to focus on here, because I, I had a list of projects that I think are things we could start with. And I don't think we need to plan out the next ten years worth of road projects to do something right away in the beginning.
Is the board, I mean, that list of projects, is the board aware of that list of projects? And is the board prepared to...
I read them off in our public meeting last week, when we were having this conversation.
You read all of them off?
I listed three projects.
Three?
Yes.
Which ones are they?
R fourteen, LFM, R, I don't know... R fourteen, um, LFM, R, I don't know if it's five or S. And it's in parentheses, R fourteen dash seven X dash fifty-five. Project number forty-seven, two four seven. And then another one, P thirty from A forty-two to Highway nine, which is STP dash five dash CO fifty-five. In parentheses, P thirty north parentheses dash, dash SE fifty-five, which is project forty-seven, two sixty-two. LFM, next one was LFM B eight-eight, one four five zero dash seven X dash fifty-five, which is project number fifty-two, three six five. Those are the three I talked about last week.
Are those the ones you want?
Five, I think, projects, but.
That's three.
The F, the STP jobs are, are, are. That was a research project that I was planning to use federal funds. It qualifies for federal funds. It's a, it's a minor collector, so you can't use federal funds on that.
Okay, could those federal funds be used on a different project?
It'd have to be another mi- minor collector, yeah.
And do we have others that would apply in that category?
I'd have to look to see where they're, where there's, where they sit with things, but we want to try and make sure that our funds are spent in a way that.
Set down and do some of the projects that would fit, because I don't want, even you with federal funds, you wanted to do it too.
Well, and, and those were kind of lining up dollars that kind of hit the target that I had discussed in our budget workshop.
So that, that's what the board would like to include in the plan?
That's what I had brought as ideas. But I think we, we need to get a list and the grant stands as well. But I think we just need a list of, a few projects to get us started to cover the dollars that we would need to borrow for, for the first year of revenue coming in at least. And go from there because we can always add more projects and we can always borrow more money once it's off the ground. I don't think we need ten or twenty years worth of plans.
And does the attorney take care of all that too? The bond application, the?
Heidi would do with the bonding side of things, yeah. The attorneys, I think they said like they would handle the communication with cities and handle those resolutions and all that. So yeah, they would be handling that. We just need the basic information for them to get started preparing documents.
So if I were, for, you know, my perspective, I think the biggest thing is getting the legal descriptions of the turbines and stuff like that. Getting that all gathered up. Projects I think we can discuss and find projects, but.
Well, we have to have that upfront.
Right, right. But we also have to have the legal description. I think the legal prescriptions are probably the good most tend to get in that information.
I guess I'd visit with Doug about that and I think between what he has for the permit and zoning and what the assessors' office has, I think you said either the assessors or auditor's office had something where it was a fairly easy format, you thought?
Uh, I received some information uh, from G I S assessors.
Okay, yeah. So yeah, I mean, that's, I guess, I don't, I don't know that what we need to get off the ground is that complex. I think it's projects and it's information of the legal descriptions of the turbines.
Yeah, I, okay, well. Again, uh, I think it's important that the board understands that staff has work that they're doing. And we will, um, we will attempt to do this. But we're being pulled in different directions, the staff, whether you're talking in the auditor's office, whether you're talking in the engineer's office. And again, I've said, I've said this before, but it, it seems strange that in March of twenty twenty-three, Kasuth County had no money. And employees were asked to pay for health insurance because there was no money and we got some disgruntled employees out there. And now all of a sudden, there is a million dollars to loan. So I, you know, the question, I think.
Doug, do you?
What's the difference between now, what's going on, what went on in March and what's going on in September of twenty twenty-three?
Doug, do you understand the financial picture of what the Rural Basic Fund is looking like right now with the current budget that was approved?
I know that in March, the, the board was talking that there.
That's not what I asked.
What's that?
That's not what I asked.
I, yeah, I know what the balance is. I don't know exactly to the dollar. But it's, I think it's greater than what it was last year. Right now, as we talk.
I think it is.
It's greater than what it was a year ago. Yet, in March of twenty twenty-three, there was no money. And forced some decisions in the road department as far as services that were, that were delivered to the traveling public. And I, I just gotta bring that up. It seems strange. And our employees, we, employees did not, there was decisions made because there was no balance.
I don't think this is going anywhere productive if we don't have a.
I just want you to know there's disgruntled employees.
I, I think the board should be well aware of that.
They should be or they are?
I can't speak for everyone.
Well, if there's no, you can't come up with the money and, and, and the people don't have time to get it done. If it doesn't get done, I guess it doesn't happen this year, by example.
Okay.
I guess the only, which I'll, I'll agree with that. We can, I can agree with that if it doesn't get done this year. But the only thing I will say as a caveat to that, if we do not proceed with this, this year, I think that will significantly impact our budget decisions going forward. And that is the purpose of doing this now. So if we want to have more tough conversations going forward.
Why would it impact our budget?
It's direct dollars that we would have the ability to allocate.
For for road projects, but that's it.
I think.
That's a large piece of our budget.
Yeah, but the, isn't it true that rural services, you're, you're limited because of House File seven eighteen?
Yeah.
Of dollar, of dollar growth.
Right.
Correct, then this is not covered by that.
Did the board know that two years ago?
This, this is not under House File seven eighteen limits.
Well, certainly it is.
The TIF is not.
You've got a rural area that has value that is growing.
It is not.
TIF, TIF is not under the same.
No, it isn't, but you got, you have rural value that two years ago you knew was growing.
Which will be powered on and that will limit us with House File seven eighteen because we will have the road. And that's why we're having this conversation.
Okay. Uh, the road department is dealing with FEMA. I've already talked about that. Um, I'm still, we are, in our mechanic shop, we are running behind. Repairs to equipment is lagging. We are doing the best we can.
Has there been any prospects for hiring mechanics?
Uh, no. It's hard to find. I just talked with, I just talked with a mechanic yesterday who happened, uh, who happened to be employed with Kasuth County. And he said his wage is considerably higher than what Kasuth County is paying. And I think you'll find, I think you'll find that with all of the, all of the employees. You'll see that in, in other markets, uh, whether it's operators, we're lagging.
Have you reevaluated your position on adjusting that wage at all?
I can't. We have an agreement.
We had conversations as a board about that.
And I, I don't know if the Kasuth County engineer was involved in this.
He were.
I was. I was involved when the board called me. You were representative. I was not involved in any kind of a, a a question-answer period of what, what would happen.
Would you like to have that?
Unintended consequences.
Would you like to have that next week on the agenda to discuss it? As a board?
If the board would like to, that'd be fine.
What's the desire of the board?
Discuss what specifically?
Wage for the mechanic's position. I've brought this up multiple times.
You need to also look at operators.
They are two separate jobs.
But they are both important, very important to the traveling public.
I didn't say they weren't important.
What information would you like?
We did make one, one test outside of the contract for the operators rate.
No, for the mechanic.
No, for the operators, did we deal, did we deal with fifty cents an hour?
That was, that was prior, yeah, prior to this agreement right now.
Yeah.
Go back to, we don't have money and any rural service account to spend or any other place. How do you expect to be able to give raises to the mechanics and work for it all night?
Well, we have mechanic positions that haven't been filled for two years. So the dollars budgeted for those positions should be available.
I think if we're gonna have this extensive of budget discussions here, it needs to be something that's more on the agenda. We're in a budget workshop, not an engineer discussion.
Yeah, I was hoping that we could discuss that during budget coming up, so.
Okay, um, what kind of language would everyone like for an agenda item for this for next week?
I think it belongs to your next year budget discussion.
I think it's probably something we need to address sooner than that. We've had open positions for years.
You're a decade, you're only a month and a half away from starting to, starting the new budgets.
All right, just a budget workshop with secondary roads after the meeting next week? Or a discussion on mechanic wages in particular? Or what is the desire?
Well, I think it's gonna have to be the new budget. Like Roger said, we've got this budget, it's gonna be, you talk about having to come up with a million dollar loan. And you talk about adding some more money to the budget. And you gotta, you gotta, you gotta add, work that into the new budget. I don't see it. You're just, you're trying to change too much. The budget that we have, you've got finished up yet, so we're gonna do a amendment here.
I would tend to agree.
The other aspect is if we don't have mechanics in-house, we're outsourcing that. So you're spending money regardless to repair the equipment. It's just a matter of who's doing it. And our in-house costs should be lower than outsourcing.
Everybody, and we found even in the commercial, it's, uh, the mechanics. They're, they're learning. They don't have a lot of experience. We're finding when they, when equipment is returned, it's not repaired satisfactorily. So, um, everybody is experiencing problems with, with a labor shortage in that.
Okay, well, we will skip that conversation, I guess. Anything else for discussion, Doug?
Uh, just remind everybody, next week Summit Carbon Solutions are having a meeting in Lakota at six o'clock, September sixteenth, Monday. Uh, there's community conversation with Solar Power, September seventeenth, five thirty, out at the Ival Lakes Community College. And then last week, we spoke a little bit, uh, that company that contacted me was Cunningham and Butler. Is there any interest in the board looking at a possible consultant to do some work with our self-insurance fund, self, health self-insurance fund?
I haven't had a chance to really look into it much.
I didn't know, I didn't know what they're gonna charge me for it.
Yeah.
So I wondered what that would all entail and what they would bring to the table for that. I don't know.
Makes a difference in what you're planning on doing with insurance next year. Are you just gonna view it like it is now? Maybe not, but if you're planning on going to a high deductible plan, I think you better ask them help. And that's kind of up to you, three and the two new people on the board.
They have to see if they, they have, they need somebody to do what they're, they're gonna charge.
They did say that they're working with Bremer County and I had a call into Bremer County to see, uh, what kind of service, what kind of what Bremer County has for health insurance and what kind of service they do provide.
And what they charge.
And, yes, I mean.
All right, anything else? Okay. All right, thanks.
Thanks, Doug.
Discussion with our auditor.
Um, okay, next week, we have, of course Doug already mentioned the windmill meeting. I will list that on the agenda.
The pipeline meeting.
I'm sorry, pipeline meeting. Um, even road windmill, geez. Um, pipeline meeting, um, in Lakota. I will put that on the agenda for next week. So just because you, you could have a corner, so. I'm gonna write that on here quick. Okay. Then next week, we have discussion decision, hiring incentives and living within the county restrictions for deputy sheriffs. We have our budget amendment hearing, first one of the year for twenty-four, twenty-five, and approving a resolution for the budget amendment. Then last week, I had invited you guys to attend our department head meeting last Thursday. Unfortunately, none of you attended. Um, we did go over some important things. One of the things that we discussed is possibly having the compensation board meet in November so that department heads kind of had an idea of what we might looking, what might be looking at for raises. Last year, none of that stuff got done until later and it was drawn out for a long period of time and we don't want to do that again. Especially since we all see low enthusiasm from our employees. So I do, um, again, I know you've heard this from me before, but I do, do need to say I am concerned about the TIF, tipping the windmills. I'm concerned that it could be a liability for the county if something would happen and we don't get the money we think we're gonna get. It's a big concern of mine. I do not want the county going into debt. It bothers me and I, I am concerned. I know you guys see the potential it has. I, I think it has great. I know you guys see the potential it has. I, I think it has great potential. But what if that potential doesn't materialize? So, and then that's all I have.
Okay, thank you, Jamie. Um, Jack?
Another meeting was the last one.
Roger?
I had an econ meeting, I guess the highlights of last year, whether yearly, end, end of the year meeting. We had eighteen million dollars that were appropriated last year for different things. We did a hundred and four home remodels. We had two million dollars in grants for homes. Locally, we did get just about two million dollars that all going up for the electric infrastructure. And Bancroft got a sizable amount, like a million seven hundred thousand for electric infrastructure. We did five hundred and fifty thousand for trails. Two hundred and thirty, or two million three hundred thousand on bridges and roads that were special projects. Two million on water, wastewater treatment plants. Talked about how our labor shortage right now, Mercy Hospital is four hundred workers short. We're having a hard time getting contractors to do work on rehab's for housing. And they went out as far as Des Moines to find contractors to help some of the projects to get caught up. And that's kind of the highlights for the year. As of this year, we're kind of breaking even. Got rid of a whole bunch of buses, the old ones, and we're, cut the fleet down to about sixty percent of what it used to be and using them more efficiently. And it's saving money in the long run. Got rid of all those six oh four diesels finally, the last one left. That's a short synopsis.
Okay. Anything else?
It's important to keep our funding to NIAID, I think it returns quite a bit of money back to the area.
I think we have to, don't we?
Yeah.
All right, any, any other reports of Roger? Are you?
Oh, that's it.
Okay, Josh?
I had no meetings last week. Tonight is EMA meeting over at the training center at six o'clock. So far, the only two I can something agenda for bylaws and, and budgets. So we'll be discussing how things are gonna be structured there moving forward. So, and that's it.
Carter?
I had no meetings. I did. Oh, I have a North Iowa community action coming up here. And there's root beer floats in Wallace this afternoon, one thirty to two thirty out in Pecan City.
Okay.
That's all I got.
All right, um, I did not have any meetings either, so.
I have a question. Did you ever, did you ever get hold of the, the owners to see about if they could qualify beyond that housing?
I did not, so were, were you gonna, or was that me?
I don't remember, but let's talk about that after meeting here.
That was a couple of weeks ago and I turned, gave the name and as you guys said, you've got, one or two are gonna get a hold of them or do something like that.
Yeah, I don't think I have.
We'll do that right after meeting here.
Okay.
Thanks for the.
Yep.
One time.
That's written in NIRA.
Yep.
Cause there's some, something about they, it wasn't about they had conflict.
Yeah, they can't, they can't have houses that they're collecting rent for section eight. Okay, board members. Okay. Okay, so I didn't have any meetings, but I did want to kind of ask and get feedback again from the board on the possibility of, um, funding for the grandstand project at the fairgrounds. What's everyone's thoughts on that? I guess I've said mine numerous times, but I wanted to see where everyone else was at there.
I think we need to start with secondary road projects and visit with our constituents and see what direction we want to go over the next few months and make a decision from there. As far as how they feel about the project and tiffing and all that.
I'm not so sure our auditor and engineer are real psyched up about doing TIF projects. If they're not on board with it, we're gonna have.
If we might not even get, get it set up?
Well, that's one of the things that we need to, if we move forward, we need to have projects. So that's where, I mean, it's part of that conversation. And if, I don't have, have all of you read the report from the Sherry Group for the grandstands at the fair? Has anyone not seen that?
Probably Kyle, you're kind of forcing some of this. I think you're pushing some of the auditor and the engineer and some of the board on this. I think you have to cooperate not.
No, I'm, I'm not forcing anything. I'm asking for input. I gave my thoughts, but I'm asking where the rest of you guys stand. If it's not something that you want to include.
From the same funding, that's, that's.
No, it wouldn't, it wouldn't be an internal loan. I, I agree with that concept. It wouldn't, it wouldn't be funded by an internal loan. That would have to be a bonded.
I did add a loan order to collect to him. Well, you can do an internal loan or you can bond it.
You pay yourself back unless you have to take out a bond.
Yeah.
We're gonna have to do both if you're gonna do a two to three billion dollar project.
Correct.
Well, we can have.
I don't know how I feel about bonding at the very moment. But if it's an internal loan, it's a little different.
Well, the problem is, is we don't have the fund balances to kind of do it.
I, I understand that, that's why we may have to look at doing bonding, but.
That's, that's actually, I mean, the conversation we had earlier this year about budget and things being tight wasn't that we, especially in rural, we had the doll, we had dollars there, but it was projected deficit and the budget that approved continued that downward momentum in our fund balance for rural. So this is one way that those dollars could be funded by a different source.
I really think you ought to look at what you've come up with in next year's budget before you commit borrowing.
Next year's budget's gonna be tighter regardless. I mean, the expenses going up and our ability for growth is being capped or it's gonna be tight anyways. So if we can find other ways to fund projects and, and keep our infrastructure, you know, up to date, we need to do that. That's, I mean, that's what we're elected to do.
But you still have to pay those projects back.
Right, right, and, and through using TIF, we can do that.
You hope.
You're counting on future tax dollars.
You, you're counting on money you don't have yet.
Which is why I suggested that we start off really small relatively to what the project is supposed to be capable of producing. Because if you have something that's capable of producing fifty or sixty million and you start off with two, your revenue over the entire life of that would have to be a fraction of what you anticipated to not be able to cover your initial obligations. So if something doesn't happen the way it's projected in the first year, you would know that and you would have results and you could make informed decisions moving forward once dollars are already coming in. And that was my point, was starting off small.
You're gonna have to explain that to the taxpayers of the county that you're borrowing money and doing projects and then paying it off with later tax dollars. How that makes more sense than to wait and do the project as you can pay for it.
Well, in essence, this is also kind of what, it's also kind of forced by House File seven eighteen. The, the focus of that was having things that are more voter approved. And this wouldn't directly be voter approved, but it would be, um, the bonding and the financial obligations of that standpoint is more out in front of the voters than just the normal budget process we go through.
So, if you, if you don't, TIF doesn't bring in additional tax dollars. I mean, the, the windmills are gonna pay their tax, but it.
It doesn't change the tax bill for that entity, no. You're right.
So that, that's something to consider. You're, you know, you're still gonna get that tax money.
It's just gonna be put into a urban renewal fund instead of being dispersed into all the regular places.
Yeah, so you would capture all of it instead of, or most of it, because it's unprotected levees. But you would capture it from other places that it would have gone.
Which would, which is like, it takes a good amount of, it would normally go to the schools, it would go to the county. And that's been some, some people say, well, wait a second, we don't want to take our money from our school.
But it's new valuation that's not currently online.
The state will backfill them currently, but I'm not worried about the school, but, uh, yeah.
Well, any questions whether or not, you know, Jamie, Doug and Luke, you know, can get it done? And there's some question whether or not they're gonna, they're gonna get it, get it, do what they've done, what needs to be done.
And we don't want you guys rushing into a decision, getting this done before December first, before you all have a chance to look at the projects you're gonna do, look at what, you know, could happen, the benefit, the con, pros versus the cons. I mean, we don't.
I think Doug, Doug has enough projects right there, most of team money dollars with the project. So even if there wasn't anything else, you know, Doug has them there, it's enough to get that started. Projects are, that, you know, that loan is enough to start. But whether or not, you know, you and Doug and Luke can, can do what you need to do to, you know, get, to get it to the attorney and to the, um, two gals that are, you know, helping us set it up.
I mean, I, I think the assessors office already got the descriptions of the turbines to Heidi for, for runner calculation. So like, I don't think that's really complicated information.
But you, you have the, the payback from the TIF, you know, the first year is six hundred and sixty thousand.
Six something, yeah.
Yeah, and the next year it only increases.
One point two million?
One point two. You're not, you wanna make sure that you're not borrowing more than what you can pay back. So you, you wanna bond a bunch of money, then all of a sudden, how much return are you getting to pay off that loan? And how slowly are you gonna pay that loan off for TIF dollars? That's what bothers me. You're gonna have to stay on top of it.
But that was my point. If you had a two million dollar initial start, you would have that all paid back within two years roughly.
No, it'd take, it'd take longer.
Remember you have interest too.
You've got interest on there. You'd have, you'd have two and a half or close to three years before you'd be at net zero almost.
You'd have just a little over two, yeah. You'd have most of it paid back in two.
You, you do have expense too, doing all of this. It isn't all, it isn't free money that you're talking about. There is expense with it.
Right, but in relation to a couple million dollar project, it's.
I'm not against the TIF, don't get me wrong. I, I'm just saying, start in it slow enough so that you don't TIF more than what your loans are gonna be, be able to be paid back relatively quickly. But don't go out so far that you're, you're betting on the come on everything. That's what I'm afraid.
Fully agree with that.
I'm afraid it's gonna happen.
That's, yeah, and I don't, I don't think we should do any more than two or three million in the beginning.
Well, I think you should try to set a number. How much you're gonna do, you're gonna do two million dollars. Now, stay within that parameter the whole time through your TIF district so that you're not.
The thing is, within a couple of years, once it ramps up, you'd be over three million in one year.
Then you can do adjustments to your TIF, but you don't have to start out with three million.
Right.
Yeah, that's, that's kind of what we were discussing too, you know, starting on small, just to get in and get it started and then making adjustments as we move forward. Once, you know, we get funds coming in, we get things, you know, figured out a little bit more. It's the initial getting it started is the biggest step. And if we don't get it in in time, then we're missing out on potential for being able to finish projects sooner. You know, cause some of those projects he had on there were gonna be completed until twenty twenty-eight. If we can get some of those high priority projects moved up a little bit.
You don't wanna load too many on top of the rotation of your.
Yeah, you're still gonna have.
But at the rate we're going with the expenses and everything, those projects that are twenty twenty-eight, pick it back to twenty thirty, twenty thirty-two.
And even if you're only doing an extra project or two a year, it's still that much more.
At that point, it almost feels like you're just keeping up a little bit.
Well, we are.
Yeah, because we've been behind for a while. And, and I guess that's what I had said in our workshops and stuff too. This would be a way to get it started and off the ground and you start small and you can always adjust as more money comes in. I mean, if, if our estimation is that six to seven hundred thousand is gonna come in, in year one and we actually receive pretty close to what we are estimating, then it gives you a reasonable level of certainty that you can project that at least one more year out or whatever. And you can build off of that once you have known information. But if you, if you start.
You gotta be careful. The state can roll it back again on various, anytime they want to.
I mean, look at those counties that took their windmills right away and then they rolled it back and they didn't have the money to pay their loan.
But the Winnebago, I believe, was one of the big ones that was in trouble with that. And they, they got in trouble because they had a project that was repowered and they took them back down to zero percent. The state clarified after they did this that they should have stayed at that thirty percent and kept the same value and it should have stayed consistent. So now that the state's clarified that, we shouldn't have that issue again.
That issue, I'm, I'm more afraid they'll just roll back the assessment value on commercial property if we start into a recession or something like that and try to make commercial more.
That's why it would be valuable to start off small and stay, stay at a lower percentage. I fully agree with that.
You, you can't always bet on the come in government.
Right.
That's, that's my fear. And I'll be gone and Jack will be gone, so we won't have to pick up the mess of pieces. But make sure you don't put yourself into a situation that gets stinky.
Yeah, and I don't, I mean, I don't wanna be in that position or be the one that set up that position either. But, um, I think two or three million out of a fifty to sixty million dollar potential is a low enough percentage that we should be relatively comfortable there. If, if the state made changes to impact the TIF program or wind turbines to that severe level that we wouldn't be safe here, then every other county with wind turbines would also be screaming.
I think they did it ready.
Yeah, and I think it's been taken care of because of that. I, I think we'd be in a much better position than a lot of others. So I guess just wanted to see where everyone's thoughts are on that. If we just start out with a couple road projects, I, I think it'd be pretty simple to get the information together that we need. Whether it's picking a couple off this list or, um... Whether it's picking a couple off this list or, um.
Well, I think it's not too hard to, to spend a million dollars in road projects.
No, it's not.
Considering the first few on there are already over two million on one project.
First one, there was three million dollars.
Yeah, yeah. I mean, and that's, that's farm to market funds too, but, I mean, we can, we can easily plug in a couple road projects. Like I said, I listed off three that kind of fit the numbers that I had targeted in my head, but it could be whatever projects. I mean, I think that's where the TIF structure gives the board the ability to target projects that we feel are more important time-wise and kind of speed some things up. Like we've talked, but, I mean, it, it could be anything on there. It's not gonna be hard to spend a million or two million dollars on a bridge project or a road project. But, um, it is a different source of funding than spending it just out of our rural basic fund. It's a different dollar, so.
And I will argue too, that, you know, by utilizing TIF, you can free up some of those other funds too.
Yep.
So, what's the, so Nick, you gotta, you gotta have a time, what's the next step? So if, if the Doug's got the projects, you got those, and you're saying that Luke and, and the assessor's office has the locations done?
Well.
So we get the description.
The next step is what, to get that information to the gallery.
To the attorney, yeah, to the attorney or, or to Heidi and she would share it, but Amy and Heidi are the ones that need that information.
Get that, or get that sent to the, to those people.
So how do you, how do you want to decide on the projects that we put in? Cause that's really what the board needs to decide on, is what projects.
Maybe you're gonna have to work with Doug in the first, first of them.
Yeah, and I'll, I'll go talk to him after the meeting's done.
He's got, he's got five of those.
He's got forty-four million dollars worth of options.
You don't want to do something that he's already got federal funds for. You got, and then you got farm to market funds.
You gotta let Doug stay away from. You gotta let Doug pick out the projects.
And if farm to market, you can use those funds for other projects too, so if you want all the priority.
Has to be farm to market.
With all, with all the possible projects in this county, I would believe that we could move those funds to wherever we needed to. I'm sure we've got plenty of options.
Our, our past due replacement, so.
I think you gotta, you gotta leave that, leave it up to Doug to decide which project he wants to put in there first.
Do we want to put something on the agenda for approving pu, uh, possible projects for urban renewal? Or do we want to just do a workshop? I mean.
Either way, at some point, we have to decide what projects we're putting in. That's, that's the point of what I'm saying. If we're moving forward, the two pieces of information they need are the legal descriptions of the turbines and the projects. Obviously, roads connecting, that's pretty simple.
That's just a matter of talking to Doug, that would be able to come up with that project.
If he has a number that, this is the number we're looking at, then should be able to.
We also need to discuss.
You're trying to, to do Doug's job for him.
No.
We're talking about stuff that we have no idea. He knows which project he wants to put on, put forth first, so. We consider talking for another half hour about projects, but it isn't gonna do any good to talk to Doug.
We also need to make sure that we're sticking with the process that Heidi has, you know, stated that we need to stick with, you know, certain steps at certain times. You know, is this jumping ahead of them if we set an agenda item to, you know, approve certain projects for potential urban renewal?
She said that's one of the things we need now.
We need now.
That's one of the first things.
Like, we needed that weeks ago if we could have.
Well, then let's.
That's, that's what we need to come up with. Or if you guys, I mean, even if you have dollar figure, like I said, I plan on talking to Doug after our meeting today, but, um, I mean, even something like that, if you have it, if you're in agreement with a two to three million dollar target or if you want a one to two million dollar target.
Two or three million, it might be too much. I don't know if they, if, if, if rural funds.
Well, we won't be, we won't be able to do an internal loan for that, no. But we don't have to borrow for every project that's listed either. We just have to, we have to borrow more than what we're planning to collect or we can't collect it. So we need to borrow at least seven hundred thousand to make it work. And so, that's what we'd have to borrow, but we don't have to, we could, we could list all of these projects and we don't have to borrow forty million dollars on day one. That's, we, but we need to have options listed.
You need to have more money borrowed than what you're gonna take in the first year.
Yes, so that's where, that's where seven hundred roughly would come in. But we could, we could list every project he's got for the next hundred years. It doesn't mean we're gonna build them all. But that's why I think if we put in two to three million dollars worth of project, we'd have enough, we could build something. Um, and we could borrow whatever we need to cover that first year of income.
Talk to Doug and get that done with him and then go to the next step.
So I'd say we probably, would it be possible to have it on the agenda for next week?
I'll talk with Doug and Tammy.
You could, you could get it done if you're gonna do it. It's gonna take Doug a long to come up with the money for the projects. You can't procrastinate much longer.
I think it'd be fair to, yeah, just have Kyle visit with Doug. They can figure out the direction we're going and we could visit with Doug next week is board.
Well, if you're able to, as I'm sure you can come to, but, um, just, we just need to, we need to have a couple options for projects to move forward. Legal descriptions and stuff shouldn't be that complicated. So, all right, anything else to come before the, go to the meeting for discussion here?
Don't forget to check with, yeah.
Yeah, we'll talk about that here afterwards, adjourn.
I'll go to the meeting right in front of me.
All right, is there a motion to adjourn?
So.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
And the opposed say nay. Return to ten eighteen.